College meeting order, shall we write for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the commissary's meeting. If you would have a cellphone, would you please silence it, I'll put it in the library. Our first order of business are the amendments from the last meeting. Have you had a chance to look over the amendments? Do you have any objections, additions, deletions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second. I have a motion on the second to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a question? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Next is open bids for the health insurance. So, this package is open. Mrs. King, whenever you're ready, go first, please.
My bid from the Horton Group.
From who, I'm sorry?
The Horton Group, from, someplace that you should tell me where they're from. They're representing Cassidy, Neese, and Brayceirick at Parkway Suite 100, Elkhart, Indiana. Benefits of compliance, someplace there should be a total amount. I can tell you right now, we're gonna have to table this until we have time to look at it, because with health insurance, it's according to how much deductible it is, and you can't just go by a flat bottom dollar, you have to see what kind of coverage you have to represent our employees properly. And they have several different offers on here. They have a warrant from a $500 deductible to $3,000 deductible, co-insurance and such. And I cannot find a bottom dollar. We succeeded in hiding that.
We're having the same move.
We're having the same trouble. Assure it health.
Okay, go ahead and tell who yours is.
Mine is from Merritton Health, from Milton, Indiana. Karen Lippincott at 13-497 Whittaker Drive, Milton, Indiana.
Ms. Lippincott's company carries our current policy. And I have one from Anthem, signed by Harry Garman from Midwest Insurance Marketers of America. I think what we should do is, I'll entertain a motion that we table these for now, and that the same committee that got together with all of the requirements for the proposals be reconvened, and look these over, and bring us back a detailed recommendation at our next meeting as to the exact dollar figures, and why we should go with a particular company, if that meets the board's approval.
Frank, I'd like to recommend that we add Nancy George to our committee.
That's fine.
She has experience with insurance with another company she previously worked with before she came to the county.
That's absolutely fine.
Do you need a motion to table?
Yes, please. And Whitworth's recommendations.
I make a motion to table these insurance bids until the committee that's been appointed, including Nancy, Kathy Heim, myself, and Gertrude, and that we meet with these insurers and let them explain what they have offered us, and see which one is the best deal for our county and our employees.
Second. I have a motion on the second to table these, a decision on this insurance policy until the committee can meet. Is there a question? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Next on the agenda, department head. Mr. Bill Gray's not going to be here. Highway Department is not going to be here. He's taking care of, we were gifted with some grindings from a local business that's having quite a bit taken off their parking lot, 3,000 tons, quite frankly, and he's busy supervising that. IT Michael King.
Primary thing I was gonna bring up was the contract between the county IT department and the other three departments. That agreement came in so late last night that I don't think anybody's had a chance to really look at it, so it's probably gonna be tabled till the next meeting to get the actual signatures on it.
We have copies of it.
Yes, I believe you do.
But, but what now, I'm sorry?
It just came in so late last night, I don't think anybody's had a chance to make sure that it's okay with their powers that be for probation or for 911, they just, I think they wanted to run it by somebody in their, in their hierarchy up there. But, I don't think there should be a problem with it, but we just need to probably table that for now until next meeting. Other than that, I've got some, just been a lot of, been keeping really busy with, between the city and the county, so.
Michael, we really, I know we've touched on this before, but we really need something as far as microphones for up here.
Yes.
I think it's, it's becoming a priority.
Okay.
So if you would give us some idea of however you think it's appropriate to do it, I know one time you talked about splicing into the TV networks microphones and...
Yeah, John's on vacation this week, I think, but...
If that doesn't work, then give us something that we can vote on.
Yeah, we'll do.
Any other questions from the board?
Is it possible, instead of tabling this, that we just go ahead and approve these contracts as long as they meet the approval of the probation office, the community corrections, and 911 authorities?
That's fine with me, if it's okay with you guys and with 911, or the departments.
Do you want the table till the 1st of November?
Yeah, because there's no, there's no reason to approve it and then have to have some kind of language change.
Have to rescind it and do it again?
Yeah.
Makes good sense, thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
To my understanding, this is actually approved in May of '14 to be in effect for this year.
I'm more worried about just the 911.
And the departments just need something in writing.
Yeah, I'm just more worried that the 911 or probation people that they might wanna run it by in their thing might say this, this verbiage needs changed for whatever reason.
I think that everyone had it approved in the budget with the council, the approval...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't get in trouble.
Before the commissioners approved it, or the interagency agreement.
Yeah.
Do you, do you need to do, when he's talking about, you need to...
I actually had to write it last night, printed it off and brought it over. The, the one that probation received, I'm fine with it, it looks like everything's okay and working. I know Michelle was on vacation, and she had said Steve Bills, he comes to a meeting, but he wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they got it, and I believe Terry was going to, she was the one that was gonna run it by her higher-ups to make sure the wording was okay.
Okay. The board's recommendation will table that.
Okay. We'll table our recommendation till we hear from the other parties.
Make a motion to table until our next meeting in November.
Second.
Motion on the second to table the contract with the three county departments until our next meeting. Is there a question?
This is probative.
Go ahead.
You could accept, I guess, one probation if you wanted.
We could do that if you need to, you have some money to pay. I'm fine with, I can run over and get that since we're done here and sign it and give it to you guys to sign.
I have to copy.
We could go ahead and apply towards that.
Yeah, I have the original here for the commissioners.
I make a motion that we accept the probation.
Wait, wait, wait. We've already got a motion on the floor.
We have to retract our other motion.
So, I'll, I have a motion on the second. Is there a question? Okay, then if you want a new motion, you can vote no on this one. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
No.
No. Three noes. Okay, now you can make your other motion.
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept the verbiage and everything for the probation department, since Jenna's here to agree to that.
Second. Okay, now we have a motion to approve the one from the probation department. Is there a question? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Anything else from me?
No.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda, sheriff's not here, county attorney, Mr. Raffel.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple ordinance to present to the board. First is an ordinance to amend the county personnel handbook with respect to nepotism and contracting. Do you guys want me to read over that, or do you want to read it to the public? It's been discussed about, it's been discussed several meetings this year, it's something that the state requires be in effect for county employees in respect to contracting with outside vendors, that there's need of nepotism or anti-nepotism language in the handbook.
You can just give us the highlights of it.
If I could just give a little history to the board. County does have a nepotism policy in the personnel handbook and an ordinance specifically for nepotism. The county did not, since this requirement came into place in July of 2012 with the State Board of Accounts, pass a separate ordinance that deals specifically with contracting, which is not showing favoritism in hiring outside businesses that do work with the county. So this particular ordinance, which would be 2015-19 that passed today, would establish that contracting ordinance and policy for the personnel handbook, which would then meet all the requirements that the state has when we complete our state reports in January for what's called the 100R.
Count four.
Yes, and that's why the auditor brought it to our attention that this was not in effect, and it should have been since 2012, but, so I would recommend that you pass it, and if it's passed, each department head or elected official will be given a certification that will need to be signed and filed with, with the board of commissioners, just sort of find that they agree to abide by the policy.
Okay. The board's heard the explanation from the auditor and from our attorney. Is there a question? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept ordinance number 2015-19, or Order of the Nepotism Rule.
Your second.
My second.
I have a motion to accept, to accept whose ordinance, 2015-19, dealing with nepotism. Is there a question? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And then I have an ordinance to present to the board to establish a speed zone on County Road 225 West and County Road 300 North, I believe.
Harrisburg School area.
The surveyor presented this last weekend, this is an ordinance establishing a 20 mile hour speed zone, which is a school, and set forth, I guess, what, what school is it?
Harrisburg. The...
Fayette Central.
The sheriff's department approached me about the lack of proper signage out there in some of the speeds that some of the residents are driving in that area, and they were concerned, so I asked the surveyor to look into it and give us a recommendation, and he talked to the sheriff's department personnel, and here we are. This also establishes speed zones on Alphana Road, correct?
Um, I don't think this ordinance says.
Well...
Well, it begins at the intersection of County Road 300 North.
The, I've got, the one I have in front of me has several paragraphs, and the second paragraph says, establish a 40 mile per hour speed zone on Alphana Road, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, that would, that would be an error, that was from the former prior ordinance system.
So remove anything that says Alphana Road?
No, this should be, let's see.
Okay.
This is a Harris.
Okay, we've heard the explanation.
Which is actually Fayette Central.
Harris.
Motion to accept the speed change, or speed ordinance for Fayette Central, establishing a 20 mile an hour speed zone on County Road 225 West, beginning at the intersection of County Road 300 North, County Road 225 South alongside County Road 225 West for $1,078.
Your second.
My second.
I have a motion on the second for the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that you just mentioned as it was read. Is there a question? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Do you want a number on this?
The speed zone will be ordinance number 2015-20.
I, with the board's permission, I'll go ahead and instruct the highway supervisor to make sure there's proper signage out there.
Sound good.
I don't have anything else to present to the board this time.
Okay, thank you. Mail, the only mail that I have is from Butler Fairman inviting us to their client depreciation dinner for county commissioners and county officials. It's 2C, December 1st, 6:00 PM at the Eddie Marlowe's at 96 and Keystone and Allison Mill Road. Do you have any other mail?
I do have a piece of mail, but I put that under new business, since it will probably require a decision one way or the other by the board.
Okay. Old business, Wendy.
I wanna talk to you guys about the longevity and the classifications. Classification and longevity has nothing to do with one another. You know, I seen where in your last meeting you wanted to change the classification of the secretary in the sheriff's department, which shouldn't have to be changed. Longevity is the years of service you have with an employer. So I don't know where you guys are coming about saying you need to change your classification for an individual to receive this longevity. Longevity is good for everybody that works for the county.
Well, let's just stick to your case, okay? You go ahead and make a presentation for, for what your problem, what your situation is.
My situation is, is the longevity. Longevity is good for everyone that works for the county, not just certain department or certain individuals. Like, the county doesn't have a policy on longevity. I have the handbooks right here, and I didn't find anything in either one of them stating anything about longevity. My thing is, is if one department or certain people are getting it, don't you think it's right for everybody that works for the county to receive longevity?
Unfortunately, the fact of longevity and the pay is out of our control. The council decides who gets what when it comes financially.
They approve, yes.
We're talking about changing classifications due to the fact that sometimes, whether I'm right or wrong, the council will say, we're not gonna give this person such and such a dollar amount because of their classification, and, you know, that would be, that's, to me, that's being biased. That's saying because of your qualification and where you are. It shouldn't matter for your qualification.
No, it doesn't.
The longevity, yes, there is nothing in the handbook that says anything about longevity. So it all falls back to the council on whether they wanna pay their employees the way they want to or not, and it's out of our hands. All we can do is say, well, we could change your classification, yes or no, and maybe push it in the right direction. We're, we're not singling out individual people out of the county and saying, well, you know, Wendy, you don't deserve it, but so-and-so does. Everyone should get it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But it's, it's the point of, does the council have the money to pay it?
Probably not.
And if they don't, you know, no matter what we do, we could vote classifications all day longer, they still can't pay it.
No.
So...
But my thing is, is classifications and longevity have nothing to do with one another, so the individual, you know, that they're wanting to, you guys are wanting to change your classification for, you shouldn't have to change your classification. They should automatically be a part of getting that. All of us should.
They should.
Yeah.
But, at the 1st of next month, when the council meets, that's the people that you have to convince as far as the financial side of it, because there's no way we could even approve to give you longevity pay. And I don't disagree with you, but it's out of our hands. I mean, as far as, you know, that person we wanna change, we could, doesn't mean we're gonna get the money, or they're gonna get their money, or you're gonna get yours.
So if you change the classification, then what happens to what the individual does right now? So will she have to be moved somewhere else, or who's gonna take over and do what they currently do?
Wendy, these, these are all hypotheticals, it's not something that's been done yet.
Yes.
Okay, so, are you complaining about the fact that we're doing something over there?
No, I just want it to be known that if longevity is good for a certain department, it's good for everybody in the county. That's my thing.
Mm-hmm.
Like, if you go and change someone's classification, don't you think everybody's classification needs to be looked at again?
No.
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 In, in the, in the situation that you're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, either board member, I could be wrong, but the fact that the council decided they were not gonna give them the financial benefits is because they are considered a courthouse employee, not an employee of the sheriff's department.
What makes the difference? What office you work for, we're all part of the county employees.
But when the council decides they're gonna give that certain department a raise...
Yeah.
And not everybody else, and they single that one person out and says, well, your classification, you're, you're not a sheriff's, you're not a sheriff's department employee, you're a courthouse employee, we're not giving it to you, okay? When the person has sat inside the sheriff's department for how many years?
Thirty-plus years.
Thirty-plus years? That's kind of a slap in the face.
Yeah, we have several people that have been here thirty-plus years.
So, you know, can we change the classification and make that person a sheriff's department employee and force the council, or not force the council, but make a recommendation to the council that they might need to give that person their pay? It's possible. But we can't turn around and go, well, now we're gonna make Wendy a sheriff's department employee. We can't do that.
No.
And, and it, I believe everyone should get longevity pay, but we're just, we're, we're picking at it trying to get what we can get day by day, because all we hear is we don't have the money to pay everybody. Everybody in this county is grossly underpaid.
That employee has a problem, you don't, that's why, that's why I'm saying that, that you can't, because there's a specific problem, you don't apply, apply the remedy to everybody that doesn't have a problem. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay, so, no, I don't think that if, unless there's a problem, I don't think that other people's classifications or benefits or anything like that should be addressed. If they have a specific problem, and that's what, what we have here, then we'll address that specific problem. I learned, I learned a long time ago the hard way not to kick at stuff that's going to, to splashback on you, so...
Yes.
Is that, does that answer your question? Does that answer your question as to...
Kinda, sorta, so the council is who I really need to be addressing this with.
Yes, council provides the funding for, for...
Yes.
Everything, so...
So, you know, if you wanna raise, and you feel justified, you and Ruth Nutty need to go to the council and address them and say, I've been here X amount of years, I, I wanna know if I can get longevity pay. I can't speak to the council.
I'm not saying that it's just me. I want everyone that works for the county to be treated fairly, no matter what department you work for.
Right.
That's the thing.
Well, and that is the thing, but, you know, as far as I understood it, and now we're gonna bring the sheriff into it, the sheriff came in here and, and fought his case with the council...
Yes.
And, and gave it everything he had to get his employees a raise at that department, okay? Now, technically, it should be unilateral, all the way through the county for all employees. Unfortunately, it's not that way. So now Ruth Nutty needs to come in and, and state her case to the council. Jenna, probation director, would have to come in here and give her case to the council. Richard Corum, Michael King, they all have to come in individually and say, I wanna raise for my department. Whether you get it or not is out of our control, but that's how it's being done. And I, it should be all the way across the board, but it's not. And I can come by and talk to you more about it later if you need me to, but...
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Hi, there's cemetery bids.
We had that.
We had those last meeting. And we received two bids, A&amp;H Grounds Care LLC from Portland, Indiana, for a total bid of $24,609.10. We also received one from Cory's Lawn Care at 495 West Boys Club Road, who is our current mower, for a bid of $21,385 each. We tabled the bid, the decision on the bid from last meeting to see what particular cemeteries he was, he or the other entity was going to donate, if, if any at all. And Mrs. King, I think that's your territory.
I went over both of these bids pretty thoroughly. We've had some problems with Cory in the past year with some of the things that he hasn't done, but he is now responding and changed the way he was reporting the work that he had done by the month, and I feel like we're on pretty good working relations with him, and he pretty well knows what the commissioners expect of him. And his bid is $3,000 less than the other, and with the state of the counties, I think we need to accept Cory's bid. I make a motion to accept Cory's bid for $2,000, $21,385, which is significantly less. He is donating to the cemeteries that he is going to be mowing, a couple of them, Milltown and Wiley Chapel, at no cost to the county. And they're not included in his bid price, too, because he's going to adopt them and attempt to try to give back to the county, as it will knock approximately $3,200 off his total bid, and it did, and bring it under his current contract, even after he added three larger cemeteries. So I make a motion to accept Cory's bid for 3,000, for $23,000.
$21,000.
$21,385.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, I'll take it. I think on, on this particular, uh, uh, motion that I'll ask, is there a question first? If not, I'll accept a roll call vote.
Aye.
No.
I'll make the call. Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Bedore?
No.
No.
One for, one against, so the commission, board president will make the deciding vote.
Aye. Okay. So Mr. Francis' bid is accepted. I will say one thing. He got quite a bit of criticism last year, and that's his entire, that's his entire business is mowing, as far as I understand it. And for, I should say, earlier this year. And for any of you who mow, and you know the rains that we got, and even if when it wasn't raining, the ground was too soft, I understand getting behind. I truly do. He has some equipment malfunctions, and I got behind my own yard, and I hate to mow grass to begin with. So I do, I do understand, but I know, and I thank you for taking care of this, Mrs. King, because
Thank you.
it's a little contentious sometimes, but I do think he does a good job. Okay. New business, mileage reimbursement rate. Is that something you want to present?
There was one other thing under old business in front of it.
I'm sorry, county calendar, I forgot.
County calendar. This calendar, and we'll also have to go before council for their approval, but what I have done this year is, instead of having four separate schedules that have the council calendar, commission calendar, and then a separate schedule, each for additional deadlines and for claim deadlines that we turned into the auditor's office, I combined everything into one sheet. So I'm asking for the commissioners to review the holiday schedule and to have looked at their regular meeting schedule for year 2016, as well as the claim schedule, and then approve that for 2016, and then this will go on to council for their approval.
I make a motion that we accept council meetings and holidays, the total county calendar for 2016 as it has been submitted.
So motion, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the Fayette County calendar for holidays, commissioners' meetings, council meetings, claims deadlines, and additional, additionals deadline. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. I, New business, mileage reimbursement rates.
The commissioners were sent a letter that I found out this past week in speaking with our grants administrator, that in July of this year, the state, for all of their statewide institutions, decreased the mileage reimbursement rate because of the decrease in gas prices and such. So it was decreased from 44 cents per mile for reimbursement to 40 cents for each business mile driven. The reason this issue came up on the county level is that our grant administrator states that when she pays back reimbursements to county employees who are required to drive their own vehicles, such as our health inspector and others, that because that is grant-funded, they have to follow the state rate of reimbursement, which means that we would have some employees receiving different rates of mileage reimbursement for work travel than other employees. So the board's being given this letter to determine if they want to leave the county rate of 44 cents or reduce it for the state rate of 40 cents, which went into effect July 1 of this year.
Well, I understand why the state did that, because oil prices are $50, $50 a barrel or less and have had been at a sustained level for a while. However, it doesn't mean tomorrow they won't be $80 a barrel. Figure that one out. Do you have a rough idea as to how much the 4-cent reduction affects the claims that have been presented, like, over the last six months or so? Just a guess at it?
No, we did not look at that.
Okay. All right. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion that we go to the same rate that the state uses, that it seems to be the proper thing to do, to be on the same level as they are. I know that 4 cents a mile doesn't sound like much if you only have people going out of town once or twice a month or something, and you don't have that many people that travel, and it's not that big a change in our reimbursement, I don't believe, but there's no reason for us to do different. Because the 44 cents a gallon has nothing to do with the mileage, it's supposed to reimburse for wear and tear on the vehicle that they're using, as well as the miles and the gasoline cost.
So your motion is to accept the 40 cents?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the 40-cent rate. Is there a question? I'm going to do a roll call vote on this one, too, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedore? Commissioner Jackson?
No.
I backstep, excuse me. We had a one for, one against, a tying vote is president.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, did we cover everything that you wanted to cover? There was something in particular you wanted to cover. Was that the mileage reimbursement rates?
Just what was on the calendar. I put everything I needed to on there.
Next, patron concerns.
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
I need to make a motion, under old business.
Okay. I'm sorry, under old business?
Yep. Our highway garage is complete and built. I don't, I need to ask a question, and I don't mean to put the auditor on the spot like this, because I usually try to ask ahead of time. Do we know how much we have left in the highway fund?
I think from our last claims. When IT submitted their last invoices for the camera systems that were required, we were at that point on our contingency funds for the highway garage, just under $7,000. Now, I know there probably have been some claims that have come in since then.
They haven't built the end for those, so I haven't gotten the bill for those.
I'm sorry, who's?
Mike. I hadn't gotten the bill for the camera shed, so I haven't been able to make it.
Okay, but we're just estimating that with that claim, knowing what the bid was, we can estimate then that it has taken us down to just under 7,000. But we can certainly get that number and bring it back to the board if you're interested in finding out this morning.
I shouldn't have cost that much. I'm going to make a motion today. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we look into putting a plaque on the county highway garage if we have the funds available. Not going to set a price, because we need to get some quotes and find out how much that's going to cost.
My second.
A motion and a second to put a plaque on the garage and look into the prices. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. In addition to that, for those of you that don't know, there was a contractors' meeting while the garage was being built every two weeks on Thursday. And obviously, there were things that needed to be taken care of in the interim. Former Commissioner Barton Barker, I asked him to take care of that because of his experience and because he wanted something to do, and he did a very, very good job. We did come in under budget on the building, and we have spent some additional monies for security system and the things of that nature, but I would like to see Mr. Barker's name on that plaque if the board is agreeable to that. Now, patron concerns. Do you have patron concerns, Dana?
I don't really have a patron concern, but I just, I put in your boxes yesterday the transportation claim, and then I'm turning into the state for this quarter. Their ridership has increased this quarter by 3%. I just wanted to bring that to commissioners' attention. According to our audit, we're supposed to bring that information to the commissioners every so often, so just wanted to bring that aware. We'll be drawing down $66,000 for them this quarter, which is pretty good. They're doing great. I'd like to see those numbers go up each time.
Thank you for your job you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, can I get everything? Just give...
Go ahead.
With all these people in here.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, it's good.
Jenna, I didn't have you on the calendar, I apologize.
Oh, well, I just figured, I was just going to do a department.
That's why I didn't call on you.
Great. It's real quick. I just wanted to report, I turned in third quarter stats to the state, which covers July 1st to September 30th. We had a total of 577 on active probation supervision. 66 of those were considered high risk, 186 were medium risk, and the remainder were low risk. Out of 133 new probation supervision cases we received, 60 were convicted of substance abuse offenses. And I'm proud to report that the total amount of probation user fees collected for third quarter was $26,601, which is an increase of over $16,000 from the same time period in 2014. Number of reasons for that, policy changes, we've got a really good assertive receptionist on collections, and I really think the credit card, being able to use the GovPayNet that I came before, has made an increase in that. Also, we had conducted probation, 302 drug screens. Out of those, 176 show as abnormal, but probably 20 to 25% of those are due to prescriptions, which are acceptable. I just thought that was interesting. I also went last week, we did submit for the DOC grant. I've mentioned that in the past. They were supposed to make a decision, however they tabled it, and I think they're meeting again actually today, there was $5 million left for the 2015-2016 year for the DOC part of it. There were 17 million requests put in. Probation put in over 150,000. I asked for three probation and one administrative assistant. So it will be very interesting to see what. It's a very new, it's the first time they've included probation, so I think there's a lot of things that need to be ironed out at the state level as far as guiding the probation and community corrections and future grants, but there'll be another grant period. I think it was the first part of January that I can apply if I don't get what I requested or I need something different or more that I will probably be back to you guys for, so I'm just anxious to see if I got anything. And that was it, just wanted to let you guys know.
Jenna, for, I can only state, and I think I'm speaking for us, the board, that both you and community corrections, you guys do a very, very good job considering some of the hours and some of the situations you have to deal with. I know it doesn't put any extra money in your pocket, but we really do appreciate what you do.
Thank you. I'll let my staff know.
You had a, I think it was you that had the write-up in the paper or something about you guys went and did a probation thing or whatever. It was, I was really glad to see that. I mean, you guys were hitting the pavement, it's long hours, but...
I can't stress, and really, I will give credit to Lisa Day and Ryan Ziggers, because they've remained actively involved with the task force, and they are putting in a lot of hours after time. They're called at home, sometimes in the evening hours if they realize that somebody's on probation and it needs to be checked out. They're following up leads, they are doing an excellent job. Plus, they're still doing the juvenile probation work, too, so, so yeah, I'm real proud of them, they've done. And we actually presented at our Popeye Conference, which is statewide for probation officers. The most in attendance that they think they've ever had was over 300. And Fayette County probation, along with Indiana State Police, did a presentation, and there were, I would say there were 100 people in the room, that we talked about our task force and what we've learned from it and how things were set up. So we got recognition through that, through our organization, too. So it's been a very positive thing, so...
You had five arrests in this last...
I'm sorry.
You had five arrests, wasn't it?
At one house.
In the state paper, at one house.
Yeah, and I think...
Because of probation visits.
Yeah. Yeah. So it continues with that. I think we're going to be forever fighting. I'm also looking into Department of Mental Health grants, where they can get vouchers for substance abuse treatment. That's the typical problem on the probationers that have addictions. They don't have insurance, or the insurance doesn't pay for, like, transportation or residential treatment, and there's going to be some mental health money opening up, and I've actually contacted Meridian, and we're working together to make sure that we have someone locally that can provide those vouchers to people. We would refer them to Meridian, so that's encouraging, too.
You brought up the fact, and a lot of people don't realize it, that probation, all law enforcement, community corrections, Department of Child Services, they all have representatives who are called in the middle of the night, who are on call to make decisions, who get out of bed in cold weather or rainy weather or anything else, and no matter how well-paid you are or aren't, that takes a toll on you after a while. And I have to say, for your probation department, you've kept, you've kept employees, because there's a huge burnout rate there, just like there is for DCS and other agencies, you've kept your employees there and at a sustainable rate, and I think that says a lot.
Yeah, and they've been good employees, too. I mean, they've really done their job well, so...
Very much so.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other patron concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of payroll and claims.
Second.
And a motion and a second for the approval of payroll and claims. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Nothing else coming before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We are adjourned. We do have a special meeting at 10 o'clock to deal with the situations for the rehabilitation grant. Call this special session of the board commissioners together to consider the owner-occupied rehabilitation grant. Shall we rise from the plights, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Carty, would you care to take the podium?
This is the second public hearing that is mandatory for the Indiana Housing Owner-Ocupied Rehabilitation Project. The Fayette County received funds from Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority in the amount of $206,250. This funded started in April 24, 2014, and it expires on October 23, 2015. There were 11 homes that participated in the project. There had to be lead testing of each home, that had to be addressed. We went in and developed a scope of work for each home according to what the homeowner wanted and what was needed for the home. These scopes of work were also submitted to Indiana Housing for approval. In those scope of work, this is just kind of a highlight, new siding was put on three homes. The exterior was completely painted on one. There were six new roofs put in. There were four furnaces and AC units. There was approximately 34 new windows put in during this project, and there was two electrical updates. electrical updates. We also did bathroom upgrades, which included accessibility measures and also any entrance accessibility measures for the homeowners. Since this was an aging-in-place project, that was one of the main goals, to be able to provide assistance so that the homeowner could remain in their property for as long as possible. So to be able to participate in this project, you had to be 55 years or older, or there had to be a disabled person in the home. Each home had to be income-qualified, which was done, and so now we're at the end of it. The state inspection was done on October 6th, so we are accumulating the documents that he needs to do the... Have a clearance on the final inspections of all 11 properties. All the claims have been submitted. The final claim, which consists of $5,000 of admin fees, that claim will be held until after the Indiana Housing audit, and that everything is satisfied, and then they will tell us that we can resubmit that claim again. Closeout documents will be submitted by the end of this week for this project, and after that, the only thing that we'll be waiting on will be for Indiana Housing to schedule their final audit for the project. And that, I just, you know, it could be two, a couple months, it could be four weeks. I just don't know until after I submit those closeouts.
Will it be this year?
I'm hoping, but I can't guarantee.
It could be next year.
It just depends on what their schedule is. It should be before the end of the year. I just really don't know.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. We have any questions, any other comments? Diana? Do you have any questions of us, Ms. Cardy?
No.
Okay, so this is basically just an informational requirement for... That the grant requires that you keep us informed as to the specifics, what's been done and what's yet to be done, correct?
And it is to let the public know, because this is an official public hearing, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Thank you very much. That's it.
There's nothing else to be presented in the special meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We stand adjourned.